Good afternoon. At this time, we will call to order the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners for our meeting of Monday, February 24, 2025. Let the record reflect, we have a forum of members Altman and Harebrand in present and Dillinger online. Adam, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, approval of Executive Session Memoranda, February 24, 2025.
Motion to approve, Harebrand. You're needed, Steve.
Second.
There you go. There you go.
Roll call. Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of minutes, February 10, 2025.
Motion to approve, Harebrand.
Second, Dillinger.
Roll call.
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have a variance request, McClure Oil variance request.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. You are correct, we have a variance, two variance requests for McClure Oil. It is located at 23576 Inglewood Road, which is the southeast corner of State Road, US 31 and 236th Street. This is the McClures that will replace the existing McClures at 216th Street that is going away because of the limitation of access. So, that being said, we received the request, we reviewed the request. Their purpose is to try to separate, their purpose for three access points is to try to separate vehicular traffic from commercial truck traffic. So, the northernmost access would be for vehicles, along with pickup trucks and trailers, RVs, things of that nature. Commercial truck access would be the second access, then the exit would be the third. And in an effort to try to keep commercial trucks from queuing onto the road is the reason for the access width of the second access point. And with the three access points, trying to separate the traffic makes things a lot safer for the vehicles to get in and out. I'm sorry, I didn't introduce. This is Roger Disler from McClure Oil and Eric Carter from Y Engineers. They're also here to answer any questions if you have them. But, in an effort to try to keep those separate, and there's no cross-access between the fueling center in the front and the commercial truck fueling center, so there's no cross-access there. So, we reviewed the request, we have no issues with that, and we would recommend that the Commissioners approve the two variance requests.
Motion to approve, Harebrand.
Second, Dillinger.
Any discussion? Clearly supported by Highway. Roll call.
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And thank you for coming. You can leave now, you don't have to suffer with us. Moving on to Highway business.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We'll have a couple items for you today. First being a Public Works quotation result. We took some open, some quotes last week for three bridges. We did some right-wing cleary prior to work. Our test awardist, Bud Rowe LLC, he was the low quoter. We did receive four or five different quotes, we'll be happy to respond, so.
Motion to approve, Harebrand.
Second, Dillinger.
Discussion? I want to thank everyone for taking the time to respond, it was robust. Roll call.
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next two items I have are not on the agenda. I would like to request you amend the agenda to include these two items. They're reports of contract final inspection and recommendation of acceptance for two federally jobs.
And which jobs are they?
One is a paving job on Oil Road, 126th Street up to Southeastern Parkway. The second job is one of our West 146th Street projects, Phase Three.
Okay. First, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add these items on. Harebrand?
Second.
On favor or roll call?
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to approve the project as submitted.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
That's all I have, I think Brad, you have a nod number two.
You're on.
I'm up. Okay. Go over the annual bid recommendations from the last meeting, where we opened those bids here, so the ones you can look at to sign. Here are the seven forms for your pleasure of signing. And, your Mark, if you want to follow along.
Thank you.
But, just to preface this, when we opened the bids, three categories, we did not receive bids from anybody on it. And that was aggregates, weed control and mowing. And, on the advice of Connor, we solicited bids from the vendors we know of for those, so they're included in this list of recommendations. So, I'll just go through it real quick and go through the award recommendations for aggregates, for stone aggregates and gravel aggregates, it's for burbing materials incorporated. They were only bidder last year, and the fact they didn't submit this year, they just forgot to submit their quote for the bid. So, we did subsequently get a bid from them. For bituminous mixes, I would recommend, the low bidder was Reece Riley, we recommend Reece Riley, the vendor for bituminous mixes, for liquid asphalt.
Okay, just a second, can we back up one second? When you solicited bids, how many people did you solicit bids from?
We solicited bids from the people that did workforce last year.
Were we required to solicit from three separate entities?
Was this the one, this is for the annual one, I'm sorry. Since they didn't receive any proposals for it, they just reach out to the ones from last year and use those going forward.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
For liquid asphalt, we typically will accept bids from the two vendors, Marathon Ashland and Asphalt Materials for plant pickup material. For delivery, job site delivery, the low bidder recommendation is with asphalt materials. For all pipes and drainage structures of that site, we're recommending that you work good with Metal Culvers Inc. for both the corrugated metal pipe and the pipe arch structures. For gasoline and fuel, it's really the same vendor we've had, it's now Keystone Colaw. Used to be Cyrus, but I recommend we go and stay with Keystone Colaw, across the street For pavement, traffic markings for both, or all three actually, painted markings, stone or plastic, and for road survey, no passing zone markings, all three of those categories, we're recommending that you go with accurate striking incorporated. For weed and brush control, for the fall spraying fertilization, we control, we're recommending you stay, we'll go with True Green. And for the grass growth regulation, we control, we go with Dalton's. And for tree and stump removal, the low bidder was Save-A-Tree. And for traffic signal maintenance, it's the same contractor we've had, Signal Construction Incorporated, we recommend those quotes. And then for mowing, for mowing, our vendor of last year, when we solicited quotes, they were actually the lower one. But, we had multiple ties to get ahold of them to send their forms in for us. We never got ahold of them, we emailed, we called cell phones, we never got them, so I'm determining them to be non-responsive, and we go with bright new landscapes for mowing.
Did I miss it, or did you go through category five, pre-engineered timber?
We had already.
Already selected. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve as submitted. Harebrand?
Any discussion? All in favor? Or, roll call?
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The only last thing I have is tentative March 7. If we need to have that, we can, I don't think we have a reason to have that meeting on Friday, March 7. If you'd like to have it for some other reason, we can.
We don't, if we don't have a reason for it.
I don't know, can you think of anything coming up that we would need to reserve that day?
That's outside my head.
Okay, we can cancel.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to cancel the highway meeting?
Motion to cancel the meeting.
March 7?
March 7.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call?
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And apparently, we need to quarantine the Highway Department because you both sound like you're definitely in. Nobody go there.
Feel like we are too.
Well, thank you for coming. Okay, Hamilton County Soil and Water Conservation District, Ms. Lane. I think Commissioner Harebrand would like to thank you publicly for all the work you've put in.
Yeah, thank you for, I know I reached out to you on some serious issues down at the State House recently, and I hate calling to stress people out and saying, hey, I need this now, but we did need it now, because they were getting ready to vote, and you were able to pull some magic and get some numbers and get them out, and it made a significant difference on the way they voted down there at the State House. So, thank you for all your work down there and jumping all over that for us.
Yeah, it was a team effort, we were happy with it.
So, thank you.
All right, well, the Hamilton County Invasives Partnership, HIP, as I will call it, just wanted to give you guys an update. HIP is really all about building a coalition of the partners or the people that are doing invasive species work in the county and also mobilizing volunteers. So, the annual report, you guys have a copy of, I think it's a really testament, a testament to how successful we've been doing that. This is the first year we've really produced an official annual report. And I just wanted to hit you with some of the highlights there. Had over $30,000 worth of volunteer time just on HIP projects. Thirty volunteer events with a value of volunteer labor of over $96,000. Our trade-in program was featured on Science Friday, which is a national public radio broadcast and podcast that has over 1.8 million listeners per week. HIPMAP is our GIS invasive species surveying and management tracking tool. Really a beautiful example of departmental collaboration to build that between soil and water and GIS, Parks Department, and some other parks departments and individual volunteers across the county. But, we're in our third year of that system, and it's really having a big impact. I know just, our biggest user of that platform is county parks, and I know it's really affecting their strategic decision-making of how they're managing public land. We have nineteen park stewards that work on an individual basis at different parks properties across the county, and last year, we brought in over $80,000 in grants, and almost all of that goes directly back to private landowners for invasive species management and small grants on their properties. So, we are heading into March, which will be Invasive Species Action Month in Hamilton County. And we pivoted a couple of years ago, going from an awareness week, we had too much to do for just one week, so we expanded it out to a month, and went from awareness to action because that's really what has to happen to make a difference against invasive species. So, I also today added a list of our spring events for you guys. You can see we have a lot of things going on all across the county, but we would love for you to join us at one of those, if you want to come out and get your hands dirty, and join some of our wonderful volunteers, which I have a few of them here with me today, but they really are the backbone of what we're doing with HIP. These are people that are out every single week, sometimes every day of the week, doing this really important work and volunteering their time. And just asking for anything else you could do to help us spread the word about Invasive Species Action Month. Educating people is the biggest part of what we do, so anytime we can reach new people is really fantastic. On the SWCD side of things, we're really excited about the new office space, we can't wait for sure. And our annual meeting is tomorrow at the Delaware Township Community Building from 11 to 2, so hopefully some people can join us for that. Still welcome to RSVP. And another thing we have on the horizon, we can see the end in sight to having our Soil is Alive Interactive Soil Health mobile exhibit basically is almost there, which we're really excited about, and we'll invite you guys to come take a look at once it is up and running.
Yeah, I've attended several of your meetings, and you really have grown since then, which is, speaks well of your organizational skills. Are Calorie Pears still being sold, are they on the list of invasives?
They are on the state list. There's a terrestrial plant rule of 44 species you can no longer buy and sell. Calorie Pear and Burning Bush weren't on it because there was too much of a potential financial impact to growers in the state. So, right now, they're waiting to recodify the terrestrial plant rule, and then the state will go through the rulemaking process to hopefully add 12 more species to that rule, which hopefully would include Calorie Pear and Burning Bush. But, yes, it's still for sale.
Well, I would suggest that maybe your organization statewide do a resolution for Boards or Commissioners to sign, asking that that be done. Because the number one problem we have in parks and private land are the Calorie Pears that are just prolific. I mean, it looks beautiful for a short time when they bloom their beautiful white, but they've taken over my acreage, and now I get to cut them all down. So, it seems crazy to keep selling them.
Yeah, we had a little bit of that, some of that grant funding was specifically dedicated to removal of landscape Calorie Pear on private property. We ran out of money in one month, and already have over eighty people on the waiting list to whenever we reopen that program. So, yeah, we're dedicating funds to remove them, but then I can go down the street and buy one, so.
Yeah, it makes no sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you ever do get a letter of support, I'm still on the Commissioners Board for the state, and so be more than happy to distribute it to them or the Association of Indiana Counties to, throughout to all the other Commissioners.
Well, this discussion was going on three years ago, and you would have thought by now, they could have, you know, downed the people selling them. And I believe you're also here to ask for proclamation to establish the month of March as Invasive Species Action Month in Hamilton County, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Harebrand.
Second, Dillinger.
If you've discussed it, roll call.
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, and thank you to the volunteers.
Yeah, thank you.
You're making a dent in that honeysuckle, which I also have a lot of. My spring project. There we go. All righty. Commissioner, sorry, jumped ahead. Buildings and ground. There it comes. Do you not have?
He's right at the door.
Oh, well, we're ready for you, Mr. Wood.
Well, that's good, I had to help a couple people out real quick. Obviously, I appreciate you letting me come up here and speak real quick. We did have, Dean came back to be who we'd like to award the project to, this HBAC project. We'll bring the contract, if you guys allow this, we'll bring the contract next Commission meeting.
Okay.
Move forward, getting the contract ready. We will get to Mr. Solomon to review and be done with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Apologize for being late.
Thank you.
No, you were only seconds late. I S S D, Mr. Burton.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Several items on the agenda today. First one is Service Express Service Agreement. This is for third-party maintenance of some equipment that's gone out of warranty but is still in use. It's a cheaper option than extending maintenance.
Motion to approve, Harebrand.
Second, Dillinger.
Discussion? Roll call.
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next one is just for some upgrades to drives that are going into some storage and the associated cables, that's from Electronic Strategies for some now certain storage.
Motion to approve, Harebrand.
Second, Dillinger.
Discussion? Roll call?
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Third one is for renewal of what's called Cisco Flex Licensing. This was on the agenda last month, I pulled it off, worked with Cisco. We moved our registration for our Cisco equipment over to People Driven Technologies. Are going to look to co-term a lot of our maintenance with them. I think we've been able to reduce a significant amount on our Cisco Smart Net. This renewal, however, needs to go in place, and it is $1,000 cheaper than the last agreement.
Motion to approve, Harebrand.
Second, Dillinger.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And then the last item is for Comptronix POSI upgrade, and as well as a new product called PAD. We budgeted for this during budget hearings last year, we're just looking to kick off that project.
Motion to approve, Harebrand.
Second, Dillinger.
Any discussion?
No.
Roll call?
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Parks and Recreation.
Good afternoon.
As part of our annual cleanup of our fixed assets, I've provided the list of 12 items to be decommissioned of our park assets. I presented it in a packet.
Are they in working order?
Some of those are in working order, some are not.
And how are you planning on decommissioning them?
We would auction those off, or dispose of them if they're broken.
Okay, the auction, are you going to use GUP deals?
I believe that's who we have checked.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Motion to approve, Harebrand.
Second, Dillinger.
Any other discussion? Roll call?
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Community Corrections, Mr. Mo Rooney.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Before you, they have submitted requests for authorization for disposal.
Could you speak into?
Yeah. I thought I was projecting loud enough, my apologies. I submitted a request for asset disposal. Pieces of equipment that are in our old dining area that are inoperable, unable to be repaired. These are, we confirmed that the auto, these are not on the capital asset list. However, the cost was lumped in the original construction of our building back in 2009, so seeking your approval to get rid of those.
Motion to approve, Harebrand.
Second, Dillinger.
And how are you going to dispose of them, they're broken and inoperative?
They're inoperable.
Okay.
And they can't be repaired.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call?
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harebrand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Governance, Risk and Compliance.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Today, I'm here with two, seeking signature on two insurance-related documents. These documents, although, and I apologize, the agenda says that these are approval of the annual liability insurance policy, these are really just two documents that are, that we are being asked for that support the insurance policies that you've already, that you've already approved. So one is for our pollution coverage through Chubb, and one's through Midwest Employers.
So is this just for the record today?
Correct.
For information.
And so happy to take any questions. Otherwise, would just request your approval and signature.
Your motion?
Do we need to approve this?
Yeah. We're just needing signature on both of those documents.
So do you approve them, or?
Well, I-
That's why I was just asking the question if he's, if we are already approved.
Well, if you read through them, there's a bunch of warranties. I just wanted to clarify, someone has gone through each item to make sure that those warranties are true and correct.
So the, these are part of the, the original policies that, yes, have already been reviewed as part of our annual process. So these are just signature documents that they've received, but these policies specifically have already been bound.
Understood. Now, we're in the application part where we make the warranties, and we want to make sure every warranty we made is true and correct, or we will come back and deny coverage. I just want to make sure that we've gone through that process internally.
Correct.
Okay. I think we need a motion to execute-
I'll make a motion to approve, Harebrant.
Second, Dillinger.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
We will call.
Oh, yeah. Go for it.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Surveyor, Mr. Duncan.
David's gonna go grab him right now.
Oh, that's okay. Don't worry about David.
It's something we're already aware of.
We won't make it so we're running over.
Make a motion to-
And for the records, a request for approval of condemnation proceedings, JS McCarthy, Phase III, Regulated Green, Project Wayne Township.
Motion to approve, Harebrant.
Second, Dillinger.
For the record, do we have the name, do we call the name of the entity or the person? Was that the Porter one?
Yes, I guess yes.
It was the Porter's. Roll call.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we're to Commissioner Committee reports. Mr. Harebrant.
I have none.
Mr. Dillinger, how's the weather?
I have none.
I have none either. Attorney. You can always count on the attorney input.
We have nothing today.
No.
Sorry to disappoint.
It is terribly disappointing. Director of Administration, Mr. Buckingham.
Thank you. I have several items this afternoon. First off, presenting for your review, discussion and approval, Deputy Williams, Hamilton County Clerk, is seeking guidance regarding renewing the lease for the storage units that are utilized by the county for secured storage of the voting machines. Current lease expires in March, the end of March. Kathy is asking for guidance regarding renewing the lease before bringing the new six-month lease to you for approval and signatures at a later meeting. I anticipate that will probably be done through the legal department at one of the two March meetings. I'm asking for a motion to advise Ms. Williams to renew the lease, begin the process to renew the lease, and to move forward with securing an additional lease for six months that would be brought to, back to you sometime in March.
Motion to approve, Harebrant.
Second, Dillinger.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, I'm presenting for your review, discussion and approval, Rachel Karts, Chancellor of Hamilton County Campus of ID Tech Community College, has requested Board of Commissioners proclaim April 8th of 2025 as ID Tech Day in Hamilton County. Jenny Russo has prepared a proclamation, and I would ask for approval of the request for the declaration and your signatures on the proclamation. Additionally, Chancellor Karts is requesting that the county illuminate the historic courthouse green throughout the day on April 8th of 2025, symbolizing the county's shared commitment to education and community empowerment.
I passed that along when we first got the notice to Mr. Woods, and he's on it. I've also asked that the bridge be illuminated green also, to have that, so we have a double impact.
And I'll follow up with Steve while we're on that.
Motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number three, presenting for your review, the Weights and Measures Monthly Report was provided to you from Scott Souter, Director of Weights and Measures, for the period from January 16th, 2025 through February 15th, 2025. Just for your-
Information.
Item four, presenting for your review and potential approval, Jason LaMester, Director of the Health Department, is requesting approval to replace three vehicles in the Health Department fleet of vehicles. All three vehicles are approximately 10 years old but have relatively low mileage on them. I've asked for, Jason has provided a justification memo that was provided to you, and has also provided some additional justification via an email for the replacement of the vehicles, which have been provided to you for your review. I would note that the funds for the new vehicles were requested by the Health Department and approved by the County Council as part of the 2025 budget process. This time, I would ask for a motion with respect to the Health Department's request to replace the three vehicles from the Health Department fleet with new vehicles, as Mr. LaMester has outlined initially.
So how is he going to dispose of the vehicles? GUP deals?
We would return those in. Those are town purpose vehicles, so we'd prior to the auction.
GUP deals auction.
Motion to approve, Harebrant.
Second, Dillinger.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next then, presenting for your information, Monica Greer, Director of the Hamilton County Council on Alcohol and Other Drugs, has scheduled the 2025 Youth Service Award Ceremony for Monday, May 12th, 2024 at 4:00 PM. As you're aware, this is the annual event during which the Commissioners serve as the award presenters to all of the selected students. I think you should receive the-
Invite.
Invite for them. Next then, presenting for your information, Noblesville Embrace Downtown Project, which started as a downtown streetscape project several years ago before being put on hold back in 2020, is moving forward in earnest, and a project schedule has been released. The email that was recently sent out to stakeholders, which outlines the project schedule, the preliminary concept review occurring in the early spring of 2025, preliminary Phase I design complete during the summer of 2025, and final Phase I design complete and bid occurring in the winter of 2025, and then Phase I construction occurring in 2026, is provided for your information with respect to the project that will impact the downtown levels of the area.
Is this the project where they're doing away with the parking on the outside square?
Yes.
Yeah, somewhat.
This is a project that is addressing parking and sidewalk areas within the downtown area. I don't know whether, they're still in the design concept, so whether there's going to be elimination of parking yet has not been officially shared.
But I'm sure that they understand the parking around the courthouse is controlled by the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, I've met with them a couple of times, and there's several things we need to talk about before we make any kind of agreement or approval with them.
I don't think they're going to be asking for approval on their jurisdiction.
Yeah, I think at this point in time, we'll see what they put forth, and obviously, I think they're well aware of your position and the county's position with respect to the parking on the square.
Okay. That was just for our information.
That was just for your information.
I've already told them that we, we would not allow them to take away the parking on the inside of the square.
I'm sure they heard that when that was being discussed, and hopefully have communicated that to the current design stage that is just getting underway.
It's my understanding that they are only talking about the north side of Connor Street and the east side of Ninth Street as far as-
Yeah, but they were, they were also asking about the possibility of allowing them to decrease our sidewalk around the courthouse square about two feet, so they could expand the road and kind of move everything towards center.
Well, we'll have to look at their plan.
Okay, that, Commissioner Dillinger, that at this point in time was just being shared so that you were aware that the process is done, and once we see any preliminary plans that they share, I'll make sure to share those with you. Next item, I wanted to bring to your attention that a vacancy apparently remains on the Hamilton North Library Board. This is an item that was dealt with at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, but the issue we were unaware of regarding the statutory required duration of an appointee's residency within the library district was discovered following that meeting, and the appointed individual is therefore unable to fill the board position. Susan Sparks, who's been recommended to fill this board position, apparently meets that required residency term and has completed the online application. I would therefore ask for a motion rescinding the prior appointment of Alexander McIntyre and appointing Susan Sparks to the Hamilton County North Library Board.
Make a motion to rescind the past appointment and also make a motion to recommend for appointment Susan Sparks.
Second.
Discussion. It seems like we've gotten caught in this trap a couple times with respect to requirements we are not aware of. I would like the board to request all boards that we have to appoint to, that if they have legal counsel, we have an opinion of their legal counsel as to the requirements of appointees. So we are aware of that before we take our time and effort to find replacements. And if they do not have attorneys representing them, that we refer it to the legal department once we ferret that out, because it would be very helpful to know all these details before we take time and effort to make appointments.
And we're, at this point, I think we're rounding out all of the appointments for 2025, so we'll have adequate time to examine all of those prior to our 2026.
Well, plus, I want to know term limits also, because we faced that issue on the Noblesville Library Board, and believe that we had an issue with that. So we just need to know what the rules are before we engage.
I'll, I'll-
Because there's a bunch of boards.
We'll coordinate the efforts to have all of the appointments at hand, and I think primarily it will fall largely to our legal department, but to the extent that-
Well, no, if they have counsel, there's no reason for us to do that.
Right.
Absolutely.
That's what they give pay.
The ones that have counsel will make sure that we request that.
And we also look at council appointments. We might as well just do a clean sweep, if you would.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Okay, I think, any other discussion on appointments?
Nope.
Roll call.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number eight, I'm presenting for your review, discussion and approval, Chris Murtons and Mike Carter from ISS are requesting to approve ISS moving forward with the data cable quote for the Prosecutor's Office Expansion Project. I believe Chris Murtons is here to address any questions that you have that are related to this matter, if you have any.
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
You need a motion for approval?
Yeah, we'd like to, we don't want to be the holdup. We know there's time effort in terms of getting the cabling done in that area.
Yeah.
So I don't know, whenever the, as soon as the lease is signed, we can get DataCom involved to get them to do the work they need to do.
Motion to approve, Harebrant.
Second, Dillinger.
Discussion. Roll call.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Sheriff.
Good afternoon. We just have one item today, and it's a new or updated agreement with LexisNexis with our Accurate Trax, and we utilize this like in investigations with cell phones, so we have to have it to make use of the data that we download from phones during criminal investigation. So it's just an updated agreement, asking for your approval on that and signature.
So moved, Harebrant.
Second, Dillinger.
So this is part of an existing, ongoing contract?
Yeah, it's just, it's an update of that, and it's already in our budget, so.
Very good. Roll call.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Auditor, it's your time to shine.
It is. So much pressure. I have for your approval, Chief Chair, Treasurer's Monthly Report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Release of bonds and letters of credit.
Motion to approve, Harebrant.
Second.
Discussion.
Al, sorry.
Roll call.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So I have the Health Trust Monthly Expenditure Report, which the Assembly Report was tabled last meeting, because you may have some questions. We do have Dottie and Kenny here if you have them.
No, I'll go, I just did not have time to go through and pull it back out, so I'll do that. But we'll go ahead and accept a motion to approve.
So moved, Harebrant.
Second.
Discussion, and thank you for reaching out. I will get back, because there's something I'm missing. Roll call.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I have the January Health Trust Monthly Expenditure Report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The Liability Trust Monthly Report from January that was tabled.
Motion to approve, Harebrant.
Second, Dillinger.
Discussion. Roll call.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Payroll claims for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Ventor claims for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then while you're signing, the Government Finance Office Association of the United States and Canada has awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to Hamilton County for our 2022 Annual Confidential Report. And we get this every year, it seems, but it's no small feat between the auditor's office, the utility and others. There's a lot of work goes into that, so I just wanted to thank them and let everybody know that we did it again.
Well, congratulations, and congratulations to Robin and the other-
Yeah, that was her.
That has retired from duty, but it was a lot of work, and we appreciate it.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got then a whole bunch of stuff to sign. Is there anything else to come before a regular meeting out on the DLs? I don't believe so. We do have, sorry, we do have a work session in Conference Room 9A, giving a legislative update and a discussion of a parking garage issue. So you're welcome to go back if you're here to, otherwise we will retire to 1A in approximately five minutes. Thank you.